And good evening and welcome to the January tenth meeting of the Murphy's City School Board, our first meeting of the new year 2017. We're glad to have those of you that are with us tonight, and we're glad to have those that are viewing from home or wherever they might be looking from. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand. We have three lovely young ladies to lead us in our pledge. Julia Conkloth, a third grader at Mitchell Nielsen, along with Ellie and Hannah Haynes, both fourth graders from Irma Siegel. We will follow our pledge with our moment of silence and would like to remember longtime supporter of Murphy's City Schools, Mr. Doug Young during our moment of silence. Ladies?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. First of all, I want to, before we approve the agenda, I want to welcome aboard our city council liaison member, Mr. Bill Shacklet. We're glad to have you with us and look forward to working closely with you in times to come. All right, approval of the agenda. You have the agenda in front of you to have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Renier. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications, Dr. Gilbert.
Thank you very much. Ms. Trae.
Hello. I've got quite a few communications today because it is the first of a new year, but we would like to begin with Casey Lane Academy thanking Church of Holy Cross. They gave all the proceeds from their fall pumpkin patch to Casey Lane for the purchase of new technology. So anytime we get technology money, we're appreciative.
Amy Miller and Jennifer Clooney, special education instructional coaches, and the preschool assessment team will be presenting the MCS success stories at this year's Partner in Education Conference on January the 31st through February the 2nd. That will be held at the Music City Center in Nashville. Also, we had our Fall BEP Teacher Mini Grant Awards that was presented to the teachers in 2016. So far, let me read a list of names that actually received those awards. Abby Sanders at Bradley Academy, the project was called Problem Solve, Build Engineer, Rube and Oh My, Lisa Redditt, Bradley Academy with an art project, Debbie Hickerson, Casey Lane Academy, her project was Moon Munchies, Angela Pope at Irma Siegel Elementary with Full Steam Ahead, Katie Capshaw at Mitchell Nielsen, her project was Making Readers, Luke Dickerson at Northfield with Illuminating Minds, Shay Miga, Beth Carter, Cindy Browning, Jessica Schneider, and Shiloh Siegel at Reeves Rogers for Unlocking Our Potential. So these are grants that are given through the BEP during the fall and then again in the spring. So we always appreciate their support of our schools. Mitchell Nielsen would like to thank Chipotle for providing dinner for the cheerleaders and the basketball teams. As you know, our basketball season ended in December. They'd also like to thank the Patel family and Subway Restaurants for providing lunch for the entire faculty and staff. They do this several times a year and the staff always very happy to get free lunches, free breakfast, or whatever else that coming free. Murphy's City Schools would also like to acknowledge a $500 donation from the Kings Men Sunday School Class at First Baptist Church towards a purchase of leg braces for one of our students who was in need. We also, it's kind of funny talking in January about everything that happened in November and December, but we also had our Education Day, if you remember, for the MTSU Education Day slash basketball game. And we are proud to report that we have actually had four of the top six attendances at the Murphy's Center. They were represented by Murphy's City Schools students. Murphy's City Schools would also like to thank the following community partners for their participation in the 2016 season of sharing. This season of sharing is coordinated through our Outreach Department as well as our social workers and services all of our schools. This year, we were able to serve over 1,000 students and their families during the holidays. Those donations came from Rat Grims Shoes, East Main Street Church of Christ, Bob Parks Realty, North Boulevard Church of Christ and their youth group, General Mills, River Oaks Community Church, Bethel United Methodist Church, the MCS Instructional Department, the Transportation Department, the Maintenance Department, and MTSU's School of Psychology Program, the New Direction Church, Hobgood School, Mitchell Nielsen School, Discovery School, and Irma Siegel Student Council, Middle Tennessee Christian School, Journeys in Community Living, and Murphy's City Police Department. So certainly, we want to thank all of these community partners in helping us have a successful season of sharing. Also, congratulations to Bradley's Florence Smith. If you have been to Bradley, you know Florence Smith. She has received a state volunteer service award from the Tennessee Parks and Recreation Association for her work with the Bradley Academy Museum and Cultural Center. Murphy's City Schools would also like to thank the Energy Systems Group for the commitment of giving $10,000 towards our Energy of Education Initiative. So we are truly thankful for that partnership. We also have received approval just two weeks ago from the Department of Children's Services and the USDA to utilize a very similar program that we used during the summer for our summer feeding program for our Incliment Weather Meal Site Program. So beginning the first day of a snow day, we will actually open several of our sites for lunch and snack for anyone that is 18 years and below. So just like the summer feeding program, you don't have to be a student of the Murphy's City Schools, but you do have to be 18 years and under. The sites that we are going to be utilizing are Northfield, Scales, Hobgood, Black Fox, Bradley, Mitchell Nielsen, Reeves Rogers, and Patterson Park. And again, those are open on our snow days for anyone 18 and below to come and receive lunch and a snack. And that will be the communications.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Some good things going on in our system. Consent items, you have that list? Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right. Action items?
You have several board policies before you. As you know, TBSBA makes recommendations for any changes that need to be made in our policies, and some of them we like and some of them we don't like. So if you'll take a look at your first one, the Board Policy 1.600, Policy Development and Adoption. Your current board policies that would align with this are BO10, BO11, and BO42. As a matter of fact, BO10 and BO42 with very, very little verbiage, they're almost exactly alike. Don't ask me why, but they are. So what we have done is taken a lot of the verbiage from BO42 and BO10 and really included it. If you have a color copy in front of you, all of the red is what is actually taken from your current board policy. And a lot of that was in the TSBA recommended policy. And then we pulled from the TSBA policy additional information that we thought that would be useful. And so what we are recommending is that the policy that is before you, that is 1.600, would replace BO10, BO11, and BO42.
All right. Now, as we go through these policies, I'm sure everybody has had an opportunity to read through them, and there may be questions on each one. If you'll just kind of bear with us so we can get all the questions in on each policy before we go any further. I'm going to start just because I can, I guess.
Of course, you're the boss.
No, not the boss. Two things. Line 24 and also in line 10 on the second page where it says adoption should require affirmative vote by a majority of the members of the board. Is that majority of the members present at that time, or is that majority of the total board?
It takes, four members of the school board have to vote for any item to pass, whether it be policies or any other motion.
All right.
That's per state law.
All right. Thank you. All right. Other questions? Ms. Renier?
On lines nine and 10, and I think as I progress through this, I found the reason, but on nine and 10, the final adoption of the policies will be recorded in the minutes of the board and placed in the policy manual. My question was, would we need to also say "and" online? But I think it's covered later in the policy.
It is.
Okay. And then line 16, so it's 15, 16, 17. The policy proposal shall be referred to the Director of Schools for consultation with the attorney, staff, principals, teachers, community, or others as may deem appropriate. Do we really have to have all those listed? Like, for instance, did all of these people see these policies for tonight?
No, but I think that, well, do you want to talk about?
That sentence has an "or" in it, so it's not mandatory that it goes to every single one of those entities each time. It's just who's necessary and could contribute.
Okay, good. Okay, that's what I have. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Barrett?
Page two, line two. It's saying, "The Director of Schools shall be responsible for drafting policy proposals." Doesn't Ms. Baker do that for us now, prepare proposals usually? Or, I guess what I'm getting at is, do we need to put "or designate" there? Or is that state law? Is that coming from state law?
It's typically the director is the one. You could say designate because Dr. Gilbert would decide when a policy's necessary, or someone could recommend it to her, and then she would delegate who needed to do the drafting of the policy.
So maybe we do need to add, it sounds like we might, or with, we need to add something there, either consultation with the lawyer, with city council, or not city council, but city attorney or something in there? Because right now, the way it reads is Dr. Gilbert's doing the policies and giving them to us. And I know you put a lot of work into these, so I want to make sure.
And I believe there's another policy on the books that indicates that the director can delegate her authority to other staff members as necessary, that's more global.
Okay.
So I think we're covered through that policy.
Okay. Other questions on this policy? All right. Do I have a motion to approve this policy on first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Renier. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Next policy.
And by the way, Kelly and I agreed that we would swap out tonight because we're going to cough if we don't. She sent me an email today about that. Your next policy is 1.601. This has to do with administrative procedures. We are recommending the TSBA policy. You have behind the TSBA recommendation the policy that it would rescind, which is FM-15. Be happy to answer any questions. Well, Kelly will be happy to answer any questions.
Barrett?
So, and maybe it's just worded differently. The one big difference I saw was none of the language in our old policies under this new policy that we're getting from the TSBA. So is this going to fall under Administrative Directive now, or?
Well, the TSBA policy is really more global. And so essentially, essentially what you have in FM-15 strictly deals with, it's more financial management. But if you look at the 1.601, it really deals with that, too.
It goes more broadly.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Renier?
So we are getting rid of FM-15.
Right.
So we don't have to have the information about Title I equipment anywhere.
Right. No. And this was a TSBA recommendation, the words that you have in 1.601.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Next policy.
Your next policy is 1.701 in school district planning, and I'd like to talk a little bit about this one. This one is, we're recommending BO37 instead. Really, it's the same as what they recommend. The only difference is that with the 1.701, you have a 17 instead of the 16. And what you have also is the 1.701 that TSBA actually recommended, which is the last one, is the longer one. In my opinion, these, what they have here as far as TSBA recommendation needs to be much broader than what it is because really, it deals with state. It's a detailed requirement by the state, and that changed so frequently that I think that what we have here with your current policy and just changing that 16 to 17 is much more applicable. I can remember when plans were done, they weren't done, and then they were done five years, and now they were done two years. So I think simply saying that the board will develop comprehensive long-range plans is much more applicable. Obviously, we're going to stay within state laws and guidelines, so that's not an issue. But I just, I do not want to get into detail that TSBA recommends, which is your last set. You have two, and then you have the last one that's longer. I'd much rather stay with what you have and just change the 16 to a 17 for the legal reference to be correct and leave it at that.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I agree with not putting "so many" commitments in writing, but I think that when we do have our planning, that we might use this as a guideline for the planning.
Right. And we, as school districts, we just finished the E-Plan, for example, but now they have changed the date and will actually be redoing the E-Plan again in the spring even though we finished it in the fall. So it's that kind of, I don't want to tie our hands with the policy to be having to come to you on a more frequent basis, much more frequent basis than we have to, to make sure that we're compliant with board policy.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Renier?
Comment. I agree totally with Ms. Smith and with what you're saying, that the more general the policy can be, easier it is for us to work with it. And I do agree, looking at the other, whatever the number was, 37 or whatever, that it's a good guideline when we are in that planning phase. So, yeah, I agree totally. So I will move to accept it on first reading.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Now, you're moving to accept the staff recommended policy of BO37 with the changes.
No. Well, 1.701.
Yes, okay. Okay. All right. Any other questions? I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next policy.
Your next policy is 1.704. This is a policy that we are required to have. I would recommend keeping our current policy, although it's almost exactly like the policy that TSBA recommends. If you'll look on the first page, I think it's the, no, it's the second page, of the one that we recommended, that is the current's policy. At the very bottom of that page, it has monitor charter school progress. That is not included in the TSBA recommendation, and I think that's really important. So my recommendation is that we take our current policy and we change its number to 1.704.
Okay. Ms. Renier?
Well, reading these, I just remember how much time we spent on this policy, and I think we did such a very detailed description and worked through it, and I think that, yeah, you're exactly right. We need to keep ours and just renumber it. On line 10 and 11, now, let me see, I may not be on the right one, and maybe that's what my mistake was. Let's see, 10 and 11.
My thinking is you're probably looking at TSBA where it has the purposes are. Is that what you're thinking, Ms. Renier?
No.
Okay.
On BO46, lines 10 and 11, where by definition, if the charter school makes an application, that, I like that it says prohibiting disabilities because we spent a lot of time when we worked on this original policy so that a charter school couldn't come in and pick and choose who they would and would not educate.
Uh huh.
And then another one was 56 and 57. Oh, yes. The application fee. Can we up that? Because if we ever, is that by state law? Okay. I was going to say, if we ever get into that, I've heard it takes hours and hours and hours. Okay. All right. So we're stuck with 500. Oh, in line 86 and 87, just as a clerical thing, we need a double spacing there. Okay. Lisa, maybe?
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Mr. Barrett?
On line three, where sponsors is capital, is there a definition of that anywhere? Or is it just, that's how it comes from the state? It's capitalized in our policy, so I didn't know if there was a?
Line three?
Line three, yeah, right.
I would need to pull that state statute and double check if that term is defined. I believe it is, but it may be defined there or in the?
In the state law? Okay. That was my question. It's probably in the state law somewhere, but?
I'd have to double check.
Okay. I was just wondering if, yeah.
Ms. Smith?
I just want to note for the record that I would not have this policy at all, but we are required by the state to include charter schools' policies.
Mr. Ballard?
Yeah, I want to go back to the $500 fee. The application fee, since it's required by the state and it's set at $500, do we know, I mean, is that money coming to the district, or is that money going to the state? And is it refundable? Should we put a word in, something in there to say, you know, it's not a refundable deposit or application fee?
I don't know. I'll have to pull the state statute. I can check that before it comes to you back on second reading and get an answer to that question.
Okay. I would just, since it is stated that it's by the, you know, we're forced to do that by the state, then who?
We are. And I think I know the answer, but I'll wait until we get?
If the state's requiring it, I bet they're wanting some of that money.
I don't think so.
I would hope that it would be, come to the local because we're the one doing all the work.
Yeah.
State's not, but?
I agree.
They don't have any money. Jared?
I would just like to add, that $500 does not cover all the work that would take to review that application. So we've gone to our legislators a few times, asked them to increase that fee for us. So, and if you're listening, please do that. Also, allow us to be the sole authorizer for charters and not being able to appeal to the Board of Education. Got it on record.
Any other discussion on this policy? If not, do we have a motion to approve as written on first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Saddles. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Renier. Have we already had a motion?
Yeah.
I just wanted to hear who was going to say.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your next policy is policy 1.800. This is school calendar. We are recommending the renumbering of STU2 to 1.800. Again, the specificity really is the reason for that. I'd much rather have it generic. We're aware of what we have to have in the calendar as far as number of days, so it just makes it a little cleaner. So I'm recommending that you keep your current policy.
Which is STU2. Is this the one? Sorry.
Mr. Barrett?
Line two, can we just go ahead and drop "of education" from, can it just be by the board? Isn't that us, right? All right.
Ask that again?
On line two of our, of the staff recommended, renumbered, it says, "As may be approved by the Board of Education," the annual tradition, throughout our policy, we, our board will say "the board" instead of "the board of education," so just drop "of education."
Tell me again, please, and I think you just said it, but I wasn't listening close enough evidently.
Oh.
From Dr. Gilbert. I like the TSBA recommended policy because it gives more of a description on days that are required and are not required. Now, what is the advantage of us going to our policy where we don't indicate that?
I think that our policy is more generic, and so I could, certainly you can have your school calendar that's recommended by TSBA. For one thing, we have two days that we use for parent teacher conferences, and we have those days in the calendar. In fact, I'm working on the calendar right now. I just think that when the state changes things, it's easier to have a more generic because we know that, at least we assume that the 180 days of instruction for students is going to stay the same. The teacher days have changed.
Okay.
And how we can use those days.
All right. Mr. Ballard?
This policy then establishes that we must have the, we must have the calendar for the 180 days. Now, we're going to have another look at a calendar and approve that actual calendar. 180 days, they may be, you could put them anywhere, but this is just saying we've got to do that at this point. Then we're going to get a chance to approve the calendar.
Right.
I'm interested in that.
Right. And I'll have that for you at the next board meeting, actually, and giving it to principals tomorrow to look at.
Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to note the progress that we've made in our, in the Murphy's, in our policy in comparison to the TSBA. It, of course, mentions that we try to coordinate holidays, fall and spring break, with Rutherford County Schools, and a lot of progress has been made in, over the years that I've had children in Murphy's City Schools, and I greatly appreciate it, and I know that many, many others do as well, so.
We try to coordinate snow days, but we can't always do that.
Well, you know what?
As your daughter knows.
Yes. She does know, but it's your problem, right? So.
Although she doesn't know that.
No, I think that the snow days make a lot of sense, that we should go back to school when our streets are clear. That is not an issue. But I also think that parents really appreciate, like the Smiths, that have children in both school systems. So thank you for your efforts with that.
Ms. Saddles?
This is not necessarily on the policy and maybe just a little bit off, but I want to commend our director for her insight over these last few days with the, really because, well, you made the right call, and it was a difficult call to make, one that some of your counterparts kind of missed. But I appreciate that you were looking out for Murphy's City Schools, and I think it was to be commended. I wouldn't want, and you told us, you know, that was the day we could have, no, thank you. That's a hard call to make, and it was very good.
It was right.
It was the right call to make.
It was the right call.
It was the absolute right call to make.
Now, I'm under pressure when the next day comes.
Yes, you are.
Thank you so much, Ms. Saddles. I appreciate that.
In situations like what we had, it was a tough call, and it did take a lot for you and your staff to make that call. When you get four or five inches on Thursday afternoon, it's not a difficult call to make. But? afternoon, it's not a difficult call to make. But in the situation that we had this past week, it was a tough call.
Yes.
Not easy to do.
Absolutely.
All right, let's get back to our policy. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the policy pertaining to school calendar?
So moved on the staff recommended.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your next, next policy is 1.801. This is school day, and, uh, we do have a recommendation for the policy that is the first policy, that is the recommended policy from, uh, TSBA, I believe, to replace the STU 6. Uh, really feel like that on our, our current policy, that particularly that first long paragraph about the at least seven hours for grades one through six, that, that is no longer applicable, and so I think that it's easier just to have, um, the, the policy that is before you, which talks about that the minimum length of the school day shall be 406, uh, 420 minutes, which is your seven hours, and then, uh, for teachers, seven and a half hours, so the 450 minutes.
All right, Ms. Rineer?
Is there a reason you went to minutes? I think hours make so much more sense.
Uh, we can do that if you wanna do that. I think that, um, it's just TSBA recommendation, and that's something we're seeing in a lot of their recommendations, is going to minutes.
Maybe because of curriculum, so many minutes in whatever subject area or whatever?
I have no idea.
I, I just think that as, as a parent or as a teacher looking at this, they're gonna have to stop and say, "420 minutes, let's see how many hours, let me divide by 60." I think it's kinda silly. I, I would like to see it the other way, by hours.
Okay. Well, what we can do, I don't, I don't, Mr. Rinestaff, is there any reason that we couldn't have it by hours instead of minutes? So, we can do the 420 minutes slash seven hours then? Okay. Would that be all right with the board?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
I could figure that one out.
List them both, list them both out.
Yeah, slash.
Other questions or comments? All right, do we have a motion to...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. My, my brain was working faster than my hand. Um, the seven hour, and I, I don't wanna be casting flowers, but I appreciate the fact that we got the seven hours, so this, because there's the question of, of snow days, and, and that is somewhat addressed in the policy of the STU 6. It's covered in the policy that we're adopting, but it's not spelled out. Is that, is that correct?
And actually, when, when you look at the snow days, we do have, and I think it's in administrative directive about teachers, and, and I will tell you my philosophy. I really do not like going late, um, and that's what that particular AD addresses. And so, uh, if we're gonna go late, I had, I, I find that a waste of time. I'd rather do all or none. There is an AD that addresses that, but as far as this particular policy, um, I don't think that it's in conflict with the one that you...
Right.
That you've approved previously.
There is a state law, I think, which states that you have to go so many hours a day to count as a day, and is that is three hours and 15 minutes?
That's right, and that's the reason our half-days count as a day.
Yeah, okay. So, if you started at eight o'clock, you couldn't let out to at least 11:15, and that, that way it counts as a full day. All right. Ms. Rineer?
Another thing that it may have been changed since I retired, but it used to be, if we were going late, teachers were still expected to be there on time, which, you know, we don't wanna put the safety of our teachers at risk, or our bus drivers, or anyone else. So, I agree with you. Sometimes it's a hard call, but with all the strange things that have been happening on Tennessee school buses right now, I can't imagine any family who, I'm sorry, I'm gonna get on my high horse. I cannot imagine any family who would balk at the fact that unfortunately this decision might have been a little bit later than normal, but you don't want your children on that bus not knowing what the weather's gonna be and what the roads are gonna be like.
My difficulty with the two hours late, and I really debated that a lot on, on last Friday, is because I know we're gonna have children on the street at the regular time.
Right.
And, and I know that that has happened with other districts that have gone two hours late, so typically...
Absolutely. The weather was, what, wind chill 16 degrees?
You know, I may decide next week differently, but I just, I'd rather, I don't like the two hours late.
I applaud you for that.
And, and I really don't like dismissing early unless we have, we have to. I think, I think we have one time since I've been here, I believe, but it's...
It was like a tornado warning.
If it was one time, it was only one time.
Something that, versus a snow.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the policy as we have recommended a change and put in seven hours and seven and a half hours alongside the 420 minutes and 450 minutes?
That's a move.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your next policy is 1.8011. I am recommending the TSBA, uh, recommended policy and to rescind our current policy. And again, it is because of the, the more generic nature with the current policy, especially with, uh, the announcements about where they're to be made, for example, would be a perfect reason that I'd rather keep the TSBA policy, because, um, the, the way that we can communicate with parents changes so fast that I don't think it would be possible to put everything in a policy like that. So, I, I prefer having it, um, where it's hazardous weather or any other emergency, which I think would, would cover what is listed and, and detailed out in your current policy. So, I am recommending the TSBA policy 1.8011.
All right, in, uh, line three, the director will notify the public media and request, who does the public media include in our situation?
We're actually gonna cover that later tonight, but, but typically I will call Lisa, and she will con, she will put it out on Twitter, Twitter, she, she will put it out on our social media, the Nashville stations, the radio stations here, and Channel 3. And DNJ, yeah.
So, we're, we're covering both, both of our local newspapers and our local radio station. Okay, all right.
And to call the, all the parents as well, right?
Right, and we'll do an all call to parents. And typically, uh, uh, on Friday, I did a really fast email to all the staff, because I knew we would already have staff either on their way or in the buildings.
All right. Ms. Settles, have a question?
Yes, the actual notification is done by Lisa, is that correct? So, I guess I'm kinda like, Jared, does it have to say "or designate," because you might not necessarily pick up the phone and call Channel 4 in Nashville.
Again, we've got a generic policy that indicates that the director can delegate any of her responsibilities to...
So, that, that covers all of that?
Yes.
So, it doesn't have to spell it all?
Right, so we don't have to hit designate every time.
Okay.
Any other questions on this policy? Do I have a motion to approve?
Selena.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your next policy is 1.805, and I apologize, board. On the, the TSBA list that they gave us, they indicated that we did not have a policy in place, and it just kept gnawing at me, and I knew we did, and we do. So, you have, uh, before you, I sent it by email, and you also have it in front of you tonight, your current policy, which is STU 35. And what we are recommending is the, uh, policy 1.803, and I'll kinda go over what the differences are, since I know that you just got this, uh, last night. So, if you, if you look at, um, S, at the 1.803, and you look at the STU 35, what you will find in the first paragraph of the current STU 35...
Where is STU 35?
Okay, it's, it's right here.
Handout.
And it's, yeah.
Handout.
What, what you find in the first paragraph of STU 35 is indicated in the policy, the TSBA policy with, except for the last sentence, which has to do with designated school bus stop. So, that is not in the 1803. Under scope, what is not in 1803 is the first, is the first sentence. And I think that's probably the reason it's not in 1803, is it's understood, when you say that smoking is prohibited on all grounds, I think that they are assuming that that, that is understood. In the second paragraph, under scope, the last phrase, regardless of whether the class or activity is located on school property, if students are present, is not in 1803. And then, under compliance and rein, and, and enforcements, the part under compliance, the part under, uh, under the B, that paragraph that goes on into your next page, is not included. But you do have included in 1803, under number two, the reference to any student who possesses tobacco products through the rest of that listing of number two. Number three, number four is not, they are not included in 1803. And then, you do not have the first part of signage. You do have signage will be posted throughout the systems, facilities to notify parents, employees, so forth, down to where it, um, the end of that. And then you have notice to contractors, notice to faculty and staff, that is not included. Now, the reason that I'm assuming that is not included is because most of that can put, be put into an administrative directive, because it really has more to do with specific groups, and it really has to do more with directing principals to say, or directing con, uh, maintenance to talk with contractors. So, I don't, I don't have a problem with 1803. In fact, that would be my recommendation. Uh, the one thing that I would change with 1803 is in line 15, I would take out for elementary and secondary school, and I would just leave, "The following notice shall be prominently posted, including in each ticket booth for sporting events." But I really think that, and of course, you all can do whatever you want with it, but I think that the 1803, the recommendation that they have, makes sense. I think that it's, it's clear enough, unless there's, uh, something specific that you see in our current policy, that you feel that, that you want there, or that you decide between tonight and two weeks from now. Because I know you haven't had a lot of time to look at this, and I apologize. And if you wanted to defer this until the next time we get together, right, that is your, your call.
Ms. Smith?
This policy, that, um, 1803 is actually one of the policies that we have created since I've been on the board that pleases me the most. And, um, I will move that we accept, uh, Dr. Gilbert's suggestion on line 15, and that we accept, uh, continue on with our policy. Is written.
And I would be fine, I would be happy to bring you an administrative directive with, at your next meeting, if you want, that would have almost everything you all have in your current policy.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Barrett? All right, any discussion?
I got it.
Mr. Barrett?
I just wanted to add that I appreciate the succinctness of the TSBA one, rather than our three pages of the other one, so, I always appreciate shortness.
All right, the STU 35, that's what we currently have.
Right, right. And the TSBA recommendation is more generic. When you, when you get down into compliance and enforcement, to me, that is more of an administrative directive, because I could see with contractors, faculty and staff, for example, it talks about human resources, is responsible for implementing procedures. I agree with that, but I think that it also is helpful to have the principals to have some involvement there, and it talks about notices to students and parents. It talks about principals who would be responsible for implementing procedures. Well, I also know that we, we have this really that comes through our handbook that really is a policy manual, too. So, I think that with the TSBA recommended policy, 1803, it allows for those kinds of adjustments to be made.
I, I do like some of the things in the, the STU 35 with compliance and enforcement, simply because I think it spells it out, uh, particularly to visitors on our campuses. But you, you think that through administrative thing, I mean...
I do.
You have things going on when the administrator's not there, then what?
Well, the administrative directives, though, apply to, to basically everybody, but it gives direction. I think it, I think we can give as much direction and really pick up your verbiage in your, your current policy and put it in an AD, but it does allow us to change that. If, if something else were to happen, and we needed to add something, or if we needed to adjust something, or if we had someone that, if we had a position that would be more appropriate, for example, um, it allows that. The philosophy, the procedures, I think the spirit of it can, can be put into an AD, and I think the spirit of it is still in the TSBA, but I think the details of what it looks like in action in a school belong more in an AD. That's, that's...
Okay.
Ms. Settles?
My question is, is it, is it currently in there, or is this gonna be something that's added?
Currently, it's in, currently it's in board policy. I would have to check and see what administrative directive we would have. But what happens when you all do a board policy, is then, if it's something that needs to be implemented in the schools, then the procedures are laid out, and we share those.
But in the, in the student handbook, some of this is spelled out, as far as...
Yes, in the student handbook.
The student and the parent handbook that they get. So, that part is, um, but then, as far as personnel.
And the student, the lines in TSBA, um, 1803 still have, as far as, as the student, and also in the, uh, board policy, that really is your discipline policy, then that, that's the use of tobacco products or illegal products is also spelled out in there with the, within the different levels of discipline that's included. Now, having said that, I would be fine with leaving whatever you all want to leave in it, though.
Mr. Ballard?
I guess, we're revising this. Why?
Well, when you look at the TSBA recommendation, which is the first one, it's, it's more generic. It still deals with the fact that smoking is prohibited on all school, school grounds, but as far as implementation of notification, for example, of your contractors and the folks that work in the school, um, it, that, that would be put in an administrative directive instead of here, because it can be more specific on what that looks like.
I just, you know, if, if, if the policy's working, excuse me, and there's not been violations of it, you know, what, what drives a new policy? Uh, other than, I know now there's no, there's new methods of smoking, you know, with vapors and stuff, and you have to update it that way. But, but if you wanna continue to include contractors, continue to include, uh, clarity on the compliance and informant, enforcement, I guess I'm just not sure why it was, why it was revised. If it was, if it was not working and there were violations, then yeah, maybe.
I think under TSBA, their reasoning for the revision was it was more generic.
Mm-hmm.
But if you wanna leave it specific, we can. There are some changes that I would wanna make on, if we do leave this policy. There's some, but, but we can certainly, I can certainly base out of this policy and make those and bring it back to you.
Yeah, and that was really more of a question of understanding about why we're doing so many of these revisions, but, uh, the other thing is, you know, I think it's pretty clear that we're tobacco-free schools, so whichever way you wanna go with it, you know, it's there.
Ms. Baker, do you have something?
Yes, I was just gonna, um, bring to the board's attention, since the majority of y'all have, were not on the board when we drafted STU 35. That was the first time we drafted a policy that encompassed the adults on the property as opposed to the students. And I think it went into all of this detail, because it was the first time this topic was addressed, and, um, a number of different board members had ideas they wanted to be sure were covered. And now it's been in place, it's been the standard, so it's now easier for Dr. Gilbert to cover some of that detail in an administrative directive. And the, um, all of these TSBA policies are coming to you, because the board had contracted with TSBA to do a revision of our board policies, and they have generic, um, policies that they send out to school districts. So, we're going through the process of taking their gen... So, we're going through the process of taking their generic policies, comparing them to what we currently have, and trying to make a determination of what do we want to keep? Do we want to, you know, get the best of both worlds and mesh them together, or follow just TSBA's? So, that's why you're gonna see so many of these policies coming to you this way. And I think TSBA has a philosophy of being much more broad topic, and not to cover a lot of detail, because they are setting out more generic policies that are designed to cover multiple school districts, as opposed to very specific issues that we may have.
And we are required by law to visit our policies...
Every two years? Yeah, two years.
So, we'll have to do the same thing again in two years.
It won't be different. After we go through them all this time, it won't, but this, I'm hoping, will be typical of what, so we can get through them, because there's six different sections.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and I'm sorry, but Sutcliffe, excuse me.
Yes, I had a question, and I'm not sure, and I may be splitting hairs, but the policy, it talks about smokeless, tobacco, electronic cigarettes, and associated paraphernalia. Vaping may not be considered electronic, and I'm not sure, because vaping, some of them is not tobacco, so I don't know if that needs to be included in the policy, because some of it is water vapors and fruit, from what I understand. Not that I am biased, I'm just saying. But my understanding, because I've had people to challenge me on it, that, well, it's not tobacco, it's something else. So, are we, is that gonna be a part of this, because we're talking about tobacco-free, but if it's not tobacco, is that included? Because we do say electronic cigarettes, which, you know, gives the impression that tobacco is used, but if we're talking about another means of inhaling vapors, that's not tobacco, do we need to include that?
Good question.
Sounds like a good thing. Kelly, you can probably check that.
Ms. Baker, we'll take that. All right, we have a motion, and a second. We've had a lot of discussion. Now, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Well, we would need to be in favor of the vote with that clarified, right? The vaping clarified.
That can come up on second reading. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, next policy.
Your next policy is 1.805. Staff recommendation that you have there, this is TSBA's recommendation, and you'll notice that we have taken some of the current policy, and included it in it, but basically, this is relating to email, and so you have a policy before you, and we are recommending that this is going to replace SS 10.
Mr. Barrett?
On our current policy on line 17, it says, personal use of the school district email or inter-office mail is prohibited. Does it say it in this recommended policy, but in a different way?
Yes, I believe it does, when it discusses that, there were certain sections that discussed that it be used for school purposes.
Okay.
I'm trying to find where that language was.
I just didn't know if it was buried, but...
This is it, just the one page?
Yeah, this is the recommended, yeah.
It's a number, I'm sorry, it's line 14, number two. Messages shall pertain to legitimate board district business. Emails shall not be used to circumvent requirements of Open Meeting Act. So, it does say legitimate board and district business.
Ms. Smith?
I actually prefer that line, where the TSBA line, because the reality is that somehow a personal email is gonna get through, and I sure don't want to say someone got fired because they got an email from someone, because the only email they knew was the cityschools.net. I mean, that would be, this just gives, it's not so prohibitive.
Rigid.
Yeah, it's not, it's just not real. I mean, there's no way that that is how, that people aren't getting private email. It shouldn't be encouraged, but it's just not real that they're not, 100% of their mail is professional material. So, I do prefer the TSBA writing of that.
Line 17, staff board members shall not reveal their password to others in network or to anyone outside of it. If we, if all of emails and all are subject to being looked at, then how is somebody gonna look at it if they don't know the password?
Guess they can backdoor it.
Those tech people know what they're doing.
But I guess my...
Can the technology people get into a teacher's email without knowing the password? Mr. Ringstaff, shaking his head, yes. What would be the reason for that?
Yes, thank you.
One example, if you're involved in a lawsuit to school system, they can subpoena emails. I had 500 of my emails subpoenaed about three years ago.
And we can get public records requests, and I believe the board has had those requests before, for emails, staff emails on certain topics. If there are investigations being done by certain state or federal agencies, they may request any emails regarding a certain topic, and that's where technology can run a search using, kind of like a Google search, a word search of the emails, to see if there are any emails regarding, you know, John Smith, if that's the topic. So, they can do, that would be some of the reasons that the emails would be looked at. I don't believe they're looked at on a regular basis, it's only when some sort of request is made, and there's a reason we have to provide the emails to someone else.
Well, I hope they're not, too, but they could be. That's my point. They could be, right?
I'm sorry, what?
They could be. Somebody could go into your email and look at all of your emails, whether they needed to or not, but they could.
If we had a request, I mean, for a particular topic.
And what authority is that? What level of authority can do that?
Ms. Baker?
I would, I mean, I think it takes someone in IT to have authority to go in to look at a person's emails, and that would have come from a directive from Dr. Gilbert, I would imagine. So, if I get a subpoena through some sort of litigation that we're dealing with, and you would be amazed at how many subpoenas we get with our parents going through divorces, where they subpoena all correspondence generated by certain teachers regarding their child. And in order to answer that subpoena, I have to ask Dr. Gilbert to have the IT staff pull any emails regarding a certain child, and, because that's what the parents want, to put in proof during the divorce. So, that's a fairly common request I get, is those type of subpoenas in custody battles, that last for educational records, and that deal with their child.
And our policy says that we should not, or employees should not use it for personal use, and I understand that, so that's even more of a reason for an employee not to use it for personal use.
Exactly.
Knowing that it can be looked at, whether it's authorized or not. All right, Mr. Barrett, you have a question? I'm sorry, but Sutcliffe, I thought Jared had his hand up.
Doing that.
Ms. Renee had her hand up first, if she was to ask.
I just had another little clerical thing on lines 18 and 19, and it's been changed, and I don't understand the change. If anyone has reason, and then they change it to "they," anyone is singular, shouldn't it be he, she, as it used to be?
In our drafting, we tried to avoid the S slash he, and tried to draft policies in such a way, we don't have to use that.
And there is a move to make "they" singular, for just such reasons. I read about that not too long ago, but, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
My question has to do with the password issue, which I'm wondering, is this just a holdover, or, because we've had a lot of discussion about the fact that everything you put on there is pretty much public record, almost, so my giving Jared my password to my email is a violation of this policy, but I'm wondering why it should be?
You asking me?
I'm asking anybody that knows. I just haven't looked in your direction.
I will yield to the department on that question.
Because, you know, as far as, well, and this is probably archaic, you know, sometimes...
There's a couple of reasons that could be an issue that I'm thinking of, is, of course, all of the documents that we have relative to students' educational records, those are confidential under state and federal law, and only can be released under subpoenas or with parental consent. They can't, so a teacher or a staff member should not be giving individuals blanket access to their email accounts, and handing out their password, because that person would potentially be able to see a student's educational records, which they may not have the authority to look at if they're not the parent, or a staff member with a reason to review that educational record. So, that's, that could be one justification for asking staff to keep those confidential, and not share them unless there's a, you know, a legitimate need to share, say, IT needs to get in and do some work on their system, or a staff, a coworker needs to go and do some work in their system, and has that authority to see those educational records. Because that's one thing we have to impress upon staff, is you have to keep the student's educational information confidential. Is that helpful?
It is.
Are there any other questions or comments on the policy? And if not, do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
All right, your next policy is 1.808, and this is one of those policies, Mr. Ballard, that you were talking about, that we feel like that we need to stay with our current policy, because it is more specific, and it's not something that necessarily can be controlled from the school district, as far as how it's managed. So, what you have before you is 1.808, and we are recommending that you keep your current policy, which is BO 41, and we simply renumber it.
And I will share with the board that when BO 41 was drafted, there's very specific state statutes relative to sex offenders and their access to school grounds, and if there is a parent that is a sex offender, and what their access is to school grounds. And so, this language in BO 41 mimics the state law almost verbatim, and it was done that way in this detail, because when this is an issue that comes up, it's very important that the principals, the teachers and staff know what to do. So, that's why we keep the language this detailed, is because of the sensitivity of this issue.
Do we, Kelly, do we ever have anybody that does a check on registered sex offenders? Like, John Doe is one, but John Doe hadn't told anybody that John Doe was a sex offender, and had been convicted of anything. So, do we ever run a check periodically?
Yeah, the schools, I think that, you know, there's the systems where you can go in and see the map in your location, so the principals can go in and see the sex offender registry map, and see what sex offenders are living within their zone, and so they can check that way. And there's also when people, I believe it's when they set up to do certain levels of volunteer, or contractors, they have to go through those type of checks. So, we have a number of different ways that checks are made. Sometimes, it's brought to our attention by other parents, that they're aware someone may have a conviction, and we will run the check and find out.
And there may be one who is moving into the area that does not admit that they are, or had been convicted. That was my main concern, that they got here and we don't know about it. Okay. Ms. Smith?
I've had some parents ask about why we don't have the software or the programs like Rutherford County Schools have, and there have been a lot of changes, limiting the number of volunteers and parents that come into the schools. In my opinion, that's good and bad, and this would be the case of why that's good, because we don't have that many people that are really entering past the front desk into the schools. So, but I have had, you know...
Right, and we're actually talking with police about that. We started some conversation about that. We had that conversation a couple of years ago, and we're re-engaged in that conversation now. We started it before Christmas, to look at it and see what's out there.
I mean, again, there's good and bad. I mean, I love parent involvement. That is, parent involvement is key to the success of our schools.
That's right.
And volunteers that can come in and help, have lunch with people that don't have active parents, I think that's fantastic. But that is, with involving sex offenders, that with the existing path that people have to get into our schools, you know, that would be really...
Yeah, you're exactly right.
All right, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
First reading on this policy. Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Renee. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your next policy is policy 6.702. This is fundraising activities, and you have the TSBA recommended policy, and you also have the BO 31. If you look at the first policy, the 6.702, what is in red on that particular policy is coming out of TSBA. So, and I'm, I'll speak for you as much as I can, but what you will find primarily changed has to do really with online fundraising, which we, it's important for us to have that policy, and so, when you look at the difference between the 6.702 and the BO 31, we are recommending 6.702 because of the additions that are there in red, and that are from TSBA.
No, that, a lot of people are starting to utilize the GoFundMe in order to help raise monies for various activities that may go on in the schools, and TSBA had sent out an updated version of the fundraising policy to address the online fundraising that you see on the third page, starting at line 28.
All right, I got a couple of questions. I'm going back, and Kelly, what you're saying, what TSBA and what the law has said, may take care of this. Vending operations, Coke machines, snack machines, in the faculty lounge, are they considered as a fundraiser? By law, at one time, and here again, I'm going back during my working years, they were. Well, I'm sorry, they were not as long as students were not available, or did not have access to them anytime during the day.
I heard of Mr. Anderson, through how the comptroller deals with that.
We don't look at the vending machines that are only accessible by the teachers as a fundraiser. There is funds that they do receive from those, and they use that money for different things, pretty much to support teacher activities at their schools. Because it's teacher money going into the machine, so therefore, we even come back out to them.
If a fundraiser, I'm representing, I'm a picture person, okay? And I want to go into the school and talk to whoever about me doing school pictures with my company. I get that permission from either Dr. Gilbert or designee before I can go into that building? And do I have to prove that to the building level principal administrator, that I have that before I can talk?
We've always allowed the principals to handle that on an individual basis, on a per-school basis. We haven't gone to a, at one time, we looked at it district-wide. Other districts have done that. It was not going to work in our district because of the size of the district. So, it's left up to each individual principal. They do have contracts with us that Kelly has put together for the schools.
But they don't have to have permission from Dr. Gilbert to go, to visit in the school to present their program?
Not, not on the photography thing, no.
Well, I, okay, go back, Dr. Gilbert. You said, what was written in red? Is that?
What is written in red is TSBA recommendation.
Okay, because under general guidelines, in red, it says, fundraising companies and other salespersons shall obtain permission in writing from director of schools office in order to visit the schools. I'm not saying which way is best. Well, I would tell you my opinion, but that doesn't matter at this point in time. But I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, that if I'm representing a picture-taking company and I want to do school pictures at Mitchell Nielsen School, do I have the opportunity to go in and talk to Ms. Newell on my own? Or do I have to have permission from the director of schools to go in that building?
In my opinion, you don't. And that's, that's one thing I asked Kelly, is can we just go ahead and make that a designee right there?
Okay.
Because that is straight from TSBA, unless there's something in law. Is there anything in law?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I'm not aware of anything either. Okay, one other question?
Can I ask a question about what you're just asking about? Is that a fundraiser? I don't even know. Is school pictures a fundraiser for the school?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't hear that. I thought it was a profit for the photographer.
Oh, it's, it's, it's listed in the policy. Line 30 on page two, off-campus activities. Now, if there's an activity after the school day.
Line 30?
On page two, where it says, the awarding of grand prize to individual students based on blah, 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 however, it is permissible, prizes usually certain levels, off-campus activities such as pizza parties should not be used as rewards to children. So, if, Mike, if, and here again, this is the way things used to be, so I don't know. But is, is not permissible then for the company to take a class Chuck E. Cheese or skating rink or whatever after school hours?
You actually have that, that's actually straight out of your current policy.
Okay. I'm sorry, say that again.
That is, that is straight out of your current policy.
Okay.
That, that we currently have.
All right. So, then that means that they cannot do that in our policy today, right?
Yes, they cannot.
You can't do it as a reward, but it can be, because I know some schools, they used to have a night at Chuck E. Cheese that was a fundraiser.
But that's.
The actual, but it was a fundraiser, but it wasn't a reward offered at the end of the fundraiser. So, I guess that's the difference.
I think that's more when the whole school considered that, let's go to Chuck E. Cheese tonight, and the profits go to the school.
Right. The school got a certain percentage.
That's, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is if.
A reward for.
A reward for a class. And here again, this is the way things used to be. So, I'm just asking if.
Well, I guess my question is, does it?
Can I bring my top-selling class to your place of business?
You sure can't. But my question is, is it off-campus? But if they have the pizza party at the school, because it goes on to say, if there's an end-of-fundraiser celebration, no child should be excluded. But you just can't have it off-campus, I'm guessing, is the?
And that's exactly, I recall when this was originally drafted, that was the exact reason they said no off-campus rewards, because some children may get left out if it's off-campus.
It wouldn't have changed the situation.
Versus the reward is.
In the school, yeah.
In school, or a prize that's given to every child gets a, maybe a coupon to go to the skating rink.
Okay.
And then their parent can choose when to take them versus.
Or I can bring the burgers to the school.
Can any of, well, I guess, may not be used, so, okay, that's in the current policy. Okay. All right, I'm done. Ms. Smith?
First, I'd like to come through this more. I'd like to study this more before we take this to any kind of vote, but.
You can make that recommendation.
And, but one thing that does stand out to me, just, there's a lot of material on this one. I would, in line 15 on page three, it says, and line 16, says, funds derived from fundraising events may not be used for, A, memberships of any kind. Well, what if I wanted the PTA to buy a membership to the Math Teachers of America Club? I mean, I don't know. I mean, it says memberships of any kind, and then staff gifts and meals. Well, that one's being violated.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, but if the PTA and the PTO does it, it's not a school-sponsored fundraiser, correct? It's a PTA, PTO, so they can do what they want to with their money.
Okay.
They can buy your car and talk them into it.
And there are times when we have advised going that route.
To make sure that the PTA did it instead of the school route?
So that we would stay with it.
This whole board is sick. It's a bad place to be. Oh, my God.
That's mine. But I would like to, I did not study this well enough. I'm sorry.
Ms. Renee?
I just, I do have some questions. And I also noted that this policy was done in, the last update was June of 2011. The only person who was on the board at that time was you, Mr. Campbell, right? You were on there with Dennis at that time. That's before he got sick. So, the rest of us don't know anything about this policy. We were not involved in it. And I do have several questions more relating to where, well, I guess it would make more sense if I looked at it again. You're limited to four active fundraisers, but apparently, there's no limit on passive fundraisers.
Oh, two?
I'm sorry? What?
They're saying two out there in Yanni.
Two? Okay, I didn't see that.
I thought it said four as well.
And then lines 12 and 13, unfortunately, I didn't write down page numbers, so I don't know which one that is. Oh, something that talked about the budget operating, the board operating budget. Let me find that. That's not page one. I don't think it's two. Yes, page three then, number 11. Funds derived from fundraising events to be deposited in the general fund or the individual school's activity funds can be spent for the following purposes, including but not limited to, number, where is it? B, material supplies, equipment that enhance the instructional programs provided by the board through its operational budget. That confuses me. Mr. Anderson, can you clarify that? Or is that one of those that we may just need to work through a little bit?
This was the policy the board wrote at the time. I don't know how to explain.
Okay, you're not there either.
That's four.
I have on here, where does it say that money can be divided? This is my concern. I know that teachers for the last few years have been concerned about not getting their full $200 each for their room accounts. So, where does it say that if there's a fundraiser and the school has earned $13,000, where can that be said that that $13,000 can be divided amongst the however many 40 teachers and put in their room accounts for them to use in their own classroom like PTAs and PTOs used to do after fundraisers? That's what I'd like to see in here.
I don't know that there's any, Gary, is there any stip, what kind of stipulations are there, other than what the state law would have, or?
All right, state, if, state law says each teacher gets $100 in their act, in their classroom account, and $100 into the pool for every teacher.
State law says that, or we say that?
State law.
State law.
So, it's been changed in the past several years?
No.
Because it wasn't that way when I was still teaching. So, that's now six years ago.
That's part of BEP, I believe.
Okay.
Yes, it's, it's, it's $200 per teacher and classroom teacher with 100 goes to their account, the other 100 goes to the pool account.
To a pool account.
And the pool account can be established as the whole school, the grade level, whichever way to decide to determine their pool. And then they spend that money. Any other monies raised is really up to what the principal says and the discretion of, say, the PTO. They go out and raise, you know, $1,000, they want to give every teacher $100, whatever. They can do that. Or they can do it for a specific reason, say they want to buy computers with that or whatever.
Science lab, whatever.
Then it will become a designated account, or it can be a general account up to the principal as to what they would give it to the, to the teachers for.
Okay.
Ms. Renee?
Yes.
I'm sorry. It is four.
It is four. It is four.
Four active fundraisers in the policy.
Yeah, I said four active, but what does it say about passive?
It says, somebody was saying it was, maybe it was two, but it's, each school is limited to four active fundraisers per school year, inclusive of PTA, PTO fundraisers.
Right.
So, if the PTO has two, the school can only have a total of two.
Right.
As far as active.
I had four active, but I didn't see a limit on the passive fundraisers. PTA organizational fundraisers.
We don't have a limit on passive because there can be so many different ones going on all the time, like, you know, a restaurant every Friday night's doing this or something else. So, we don't limit the passive fundraisers.
And the, somewhere it talks about like the specific school organization. I guess that's what I was going to ask you to explain. So, that's what you're saying. If, like, my question was, I know we sell snacks at ball games. Where does that money go?
Depends on how the principal sets it up. It may be for like the sixth-grade trip. It may be for like the student government. That's however the principal allows.
We need to write this a little more generic. That gives the principal more authority. And it needs, I think, to be stated in here somewhere that they have the authority to decide how these monies will be spent or appropriated throughout the school or whatever. I don't know where it would go. I agree with Collier. We probably need to look at this a little bit more. And the, isn't there the form for the PTO, yeah, the organization form that comes afterwards? I found it kind of interesting that when it talks about expected student involvements on here somewhere, I guess that means perhaps how many students are going to be working on the fundraiser and school-wide or specific school organization?
I suspect that that's not what it means.
You think it's not?
I think it means that what the, well, I mean, it could be two ways. One way is the funds that are being raised, how many students do they impact?
Oh, see, so there's, yeah, I didn't take it that way.
Yeah, I mean, that's why it's, it could be twofold. I don't know.
Expected student involvement, it says in parentheses, school-wide or specific school organization. So, if it's.
So, I think it has to do with.
Student involvement, if it's school-wide, that's everybody. If it's for cheerleaders, then that's a specific school organization.
Right.
Or boys' basketball, or girls' basketball, or baby club, or whatever.
And I think that on this form, I think it's a protection for the school where it asks for the account balance, I think, at the beginning of the fundraiser, because unfortunately, we've heard, thank the good Lord, not here, but we've heard of instances where somebody takes money that's intended for the school. So, I think that this looks to me like you're stating what your balance is now, and then after the fundraiser, we should see that the balance increases, not levels off or anything. Is that kind of the way it was intended?
This, this really gives clarity. And so, when, when it comes up to me, what, what you may find is we're going to sell whatever, and it explains what the students' roles are going to be so that we're clear about that.
Right.
And, and then typically, I know there's been one time when it just come up, and I questioned one thing about it because it had to do with, with, really with social medias, with anything else. But it really just gives us a picture of, and it does, you're absolutely right, it does protect.
Protects us.
Because if there's a question about it, then we have a record of what happened.
Right.
And that's, that's really important.
Mr. Suddles?
Mr. Chairman, on line, on page two, the policy, number 28, line, I don't know if we can put more teeth in this, or this is just how we want to leave it, because it's, to me, it's a little bit, I don't know. Door-to-door sales are strongly discouraged and not endorsed by the school system. So, they're not prohibited, but they're not endorsed. To me, that's kind of gray.
How are you going to prohibit my child from going to the next-door neighbor to ask them if they want to buy candy?
Well, I don't guess you can, it can be prohibited in the same way that you can't prohibit me from giving you my password.
Right.
Same thing. But we still put it in the policy. So, I think if, because I guess what I'm looking at is a liability of not saying that we prohibit it. That's, that's the only thing that I'm looking at. I never allowed my, my children, when they were in Murphyville City Schools, to go door-to-door for fundraisers. You ask friends at school, I mean, at church and, you know, work and things like that. But I think, to me, I'd like to see a little more teeth in it, other than just say, we strongly discourage and we don't endorse. Of course, we're not endorsing it, but I just think it needs a little more teeth.
I don't think you, I don't think we can police it either way, no matter what it says.
No, we can't police it.
I would like to make a suggestion. I'm going to make a motion. I can do that, can't I, Kelly?
Yes, you can.
I'm going to make a motion that we defer this policy to our next meeting so that it will give everybody ample time to go through and read it, and look at it, and digest it, and we can come back with some specific concerns and things we, we need to do or can do. That's my motion.
Could we perhaps go over this on, at the retreat?
My motion is to bring it to the next board meeting at this point in time.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Second, it didn't need a second on that, yeah.
Second, by Mr. Barrett.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
And please let me know if you do have questions so that I can get those answers for you, because I understand. The next one is BO26, and I'm just recommending that we delete that policy. And, and TSBA did not see a reason to have it. I think it, I'm not sure. I'm sure the board wanted to make a statement about educational and non-educational agencies, but I think at this point in time, I'm not sure that there's a need, need for that anymore, because schools are going to have to have involvement. And that's, I'm assuming why TSBA recommended that we delete it, and I agree with them. But if the board wants to keep it, we can keep it.
Mr. Barrett?
No, I'm all for rescinding this. It seems to put in words what we're already actively doing, you know, cooperating with MTSU, with Rutherford County School Board, with all the other educational agencies. So, I, I don't really see the point in putting this into our policy. And maybe at some point, it seemed like a good idea, but now I'm all for rescinding it, and that's, that's fine.
Mr. Suddles?
I've got a question, and I don't want to seem like I'm a little slower than everybody else, but I'm willing. Was this a? Was this adopted in 1979?
Revised in 2000.
In 2011, but it was adopted in '79? Well, that might be the reason that it's in there. Because it spells out Rutherford County, MTSU, and other state and local, so that, I understand.
I think the policy itself deserved, it, it is, to me, it's more of what you would have in a strategic plan than really what you would have in board policy, and I'm assuming, although TSBA did not give us any more specific reasons than, than just deleting it, and I do agree with them, though.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved to delete.
And the motion is what, Mr. Barrett?
To delete the...
To delete?
Yeah.
And second, Ms. Suddles, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition? Thank you very much. That was good.
Is that it?
Well, I hate to tell you, but if we could keep this pace up, it would be great. I just don't know whether we can keep the pace up or bring new policies in.
If you did this while you're under the weather, we'd, I mean...
We'd get it, yeah, that's right.
Ready to go.
Oh, next we have reports and information, and I apologize, Mr. Ringstaff, I did not talk to you, so I'm not sure who this is coming from, but we have sick leave bank trustees annual meeting.
Yes, ma'am, we have five trustees for our certified sick leave bank. That's if someone, if a teacher runs out of sick days and they're still ill, then they can apply for sick leave bank if they're a member of it. We have five trustees. Two of those are board, school board members, and our last two school board members rotated off the school board, Nancy Phillips and Dr. Brown. Talked to Mr. Campbell to nominate two new school board members to serve in our trustee bank. Were you able to do that?
Yes. Ms. Rannier and Ms. Smith? I've conferred with both of them today, and they both have agreed.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Your next report, information, we start with Mr. Anderson's material, and so we'll go all the way through till we get to inclement weather policy, and then I'll have Ms. Trail talk about that.
Hey, the first one is your budget development timeline. This is generated every January and lays out the procedures and processes and times of when reports are due and when different functions happen, and so that is there for you. There's no vote on it, just information. The one thing that's really needs your attention to is the March one, from the 28th to April 13th, the last line in the March board work sessions. We ask that you schedule your, your meetings during that window, if possible, to go over the proposed budget as established and developed by the director of schools and the staff. So that's the window that we look at, but every year, we lay this out for you, so you can see. This evening, at the end of the meeting, we'll be distributing budget priority requests for you to fill out, and then turn back in to us, so we know what your priorities are for the development of our budget. Anyone have any questions about that piece?
Mr. Barrett?
Are we going to run into the same thing we did last year with the state, getting us the numbers?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I mean, it just seems like, I know it's a recurring theme with them, but...
That's their standard procedure. They don't give it to us after we're done.
I'm just putting it on record, that's very frustrating to, to not be able to have those numbers, so...
It's very frustrating. They give you an April estimate, May estimate, June estimate, and July final, and the April estimate comes out after we've gone through everything. So we are, we approach the budget more of an expense side in the beginning, because we really don't know the revenue side yet. We do our best guesstimate based on what we hear from the legislation, but it, it's always a shot in the dark in the very, very first meeting as to what kind of revenues we can expect.
And we appreciate all the work that you do when you put that together, so, thank you.
Mr. Anderson, I like starting in March, but then when we come to April, I would assume that we would hope that by this April 25th, we will have determined what we consider to be our budget for the next year. In fact, I would, I would think we would do it through the work sessions. Is that the plan?
Yes, so you develop it through the work session, then you have to make a vote on it at the, at your April meeting, and then we have to submit it to the city council by May 1st. So we put in there, the April 28th is the last, last item.
So if, if we get our meetings done in March, there would be no reason why we would not be ready to approve by the April 25th meeting?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct, and you can always adjust it as we go, as we learn more information, but we have to present one to the city council by May 1st.
Okay, all right. Correct, Ms. Smith?
So, Mr. Shacklet, we know that you are going to be our biggest advocate, of course, with our nice friends with the city council. Do you have any suggestions about our timeline, or is there anything that we need to do that would be beneficial to the bottom line for Murfreesboro City Schools?
Well, all of the agencies that feed our city's budget have understanding of that, how that functions, and I'm assuming this has functioned well in the past, so I would think, you know, follows...
Well, I'm biased about, you know...
Right.
Which agency, so I'm...
Of course, you know, but it, it all comes together and seems to fit together in this timeline for the city to be able to see that, and for the preparation of the budget. By the way, we, we're going to review our last year's budget and got a commendation for its efficiency last year as well, and that's many, many years consecutively that our, our city's budget's been recognized by, for its thoroughness and its competency. So, you know, I don't know that there's anything I would recommend changing, or it seems to function well.
Thank you.
We need to be thinking about these dates in March. I thought we were going to have two or three weeks in here, but with spring break, the last week of March, that might affect some of you if you have things that you're going to do family with spring break when they're out of school.
It affected us last year, I think.
It did.
Yeah, it, it's a, it's really a three-week window, which, of which two weeks is not the break, so it, it should be enough time to work it out.
I would ask that you look at your calendars as much and see if we can set, I'm going to say at least three dates during this time period from March 28th to April 13th, three different dates that we would be able to get together in an afternoon session, four o'clock on, maybe, to begin our, looking at, at our budget, is what we will need to do, so we can kind of get those down pat. And I know some of you that are not retired yet have to make some accommodations, one way or the other.
And we appreciate that.
You're welcome. Been there and done there. It's been a while.
We had our turn.
Yeah.
Like, if, if you can get those dates...
What's spring break date?
March 27th through the 31st.
Is it on there? What, uh, okay, thank you.
If we can get those dates, Lisa, sometime within the next week, or at least before we meet again, so maybe we can firm up some dates for budget. It doesn't matter to you too much, Mr. Anderson, as long as it's in those. Are there any dates in there that...
No.
You cannot, or Dr. Gilbert cannot, or the staff cannot?
No, it's fine.
As far as I know, we're here.
All right.
Okay, the next item?
Next item, yes, sir.
Next item is the end of the fourth attendance period. It ended on December 9th, so this is kind of removed quite a bit from where we are today. The next attendance period ends on January 25th. Yeah, January 25th, so what this one is indicating that we had 95% attendance percentage. Obviously, y'all went to school and got sick, got the kids sick, coughing over there. And we are at a 19.99 pupil teacher ratio average for all of our grades. We're up 79 students over last year, and we're at 8,498 students at this time. So in the next report, when we update that one, we'll have, that won't be until February to give you an updated number, since the period doesn't end until the 25th of January. Any questions on this one?
We're still below growth numbers, right?
Yeah. Yes, we are. We're still below the growth numbers. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I'll go all the way back to the top now.
The personnel report is before you. If you have any questions, if you'd contact me after the meeting, that would be great. And I guess our next, our next... Is inclement weather.
Well, I typically give this before the first snow day, but we kind of did a run-through already. So with our inclement weather, you guys all know that Dr. Gilbert starts her day really early, unless, as you say, Mr. Campbell, it snows four inches the night before, which makes the decision much easier. So, Dr. Gilbert, in collaboration with the street department, Murfreesboro Police Department, our transportation department, our maintenance department, everyone's looking at roads and weather and trying to make the best decision we can possibly make for our students. When that decision is made, and for this instance, we're going to assume it's a closure, so we do notify our staff and our parents. That notification goes out first on our social media, because obviously, it's the easiest thing to put out there, and before I can make an all-call, the social media has already gone crazy. So it's, it's a beautiful thing to have the social media, so that parents can share that information. So Twitter and Facebook are our social medias. I also send it to Murfreesboro, the city of Murfreesboro, and City TV puts it out on their social media as well. So that's, that's the easiest way of sharing. Following that, we do all calls to our parents and to our staff members, and we also notify, we change our website, and we notify the media, which includes Nashville, as well as the local stations. So all of that is done, hopefully, within a 20-minute timeframe, if everything goes well.
Good job.
Any questions?
Any question?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to thank Lisa for that call she gave me the other day, telling me not to come to schools. I took it quite personal.
You don't have to come to the day. So, anyway, that's, that's kind of how it works. We have special codes that we utilize for channels 2, 4, 5, 17, and the other places. We do lots of, I do a lot of texting on those mornings to the reporters.
Isn't it wonderful to have the modern technology that you can do that so much easier today than you could have 25 years ago?
It is amazing, yes, it is. And honestly, it is amazing just to see our Facebook and Twitter and how much goes out on it before I can even get the all-call out. So, which is great, because it, it allows people to get the news as fast as they possibly can. Yeah, it's...
Thank you, ma'am, for a job well done. Appreciate you very much.
And those are your reports and information.
Items under other business? Mr. Barrett?
I just want to take a moment to commend our city council the other night. I had a privilege of going to the legislative delegation when they, when the city council met with them, and they were great advocates for our school board and our school system as far as funding and letting the legislative delegation know our concerns, and I just want to take the time to thank you, Mr. Shacklet, and Mayor McFarland, and the rest of the council members for do, for being those advocates for us. We appreciate that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate those that attended. We had our full delegation there, which was encouraging, and I think so much of effective government is about relationships, and so getting to know each other. We've known each other, some of us, all of our lives, but it's nice to have that relationship that you can draw upon, that trust factor when you're asking for something. And it was interesting to see how some of those things that need to be worked out, where there's not a misunderstanding, can be done face-to-face, where in an email, or a letter, or smoke signals, whatever we're doing to get them. A lot of times, there's a misunderstanding, but when we look at each other in the eye and we ask those questions, a lot of times, it can, it can move a lot smoother. Thank you for your, the work of this board. We have, as we all know, an exceptional educational system in our community that we've all benefited from, whether it be ourselves or our children. The community benefits from that, and I thank you for sitting here and listening to y'all talk tonight. We've got thoughtful people that not only bring their head to the, the work that you're doing, but your heart as well, and I thank you for the work that you do on the school board.
Thank you. Anything else coming for Ms. Suddles?
I just wanted to let the board know that in December, I was able to attend new member orientation at TSBA. Two-day event, very, very, very informative. My main takeaway was that, and we say it all the time here, but the main takeaway was that we have a very, 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 very good school system here. And also, I appreciate Dr. Gilbert and the relationship that, I'm encouraged even more with the relationship that she has with our board after going to that two-day conference. It let me know just how privileged and really blessed we are for the relationship that we have with our director and with our attorney. I was very encouraged, it was very informative, so I appreciated the opportunity to go. It was really good.
It's always good to go and see how other people operate, then you really know how...
Yes.
We've got it good, don't we?
Yes. Operate is a good word to use.
Anything else coming for this board tonight? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Good night.